So, welcome again to the Hamilton School Board February 8th meeting. It's great to see this many people here. We've never had this many at a school board meeting. So, it's great to see you here. Welcome. If you've never been before, I'd like to see you come back. So, we'll start with the owner of the lounge. And pleasurefully, Sophie Sam, please.
Pleasurefully, yes. United States of America, and your republic, where this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Dr. Nelson, moving on to...
Well... Yours or mine? Not yours. So, firstly, to approve the agenda. Before we get to the agenda, I would like to amend the agenda to, as mentioned in the agenda, to our student reference earlier, to speak out on the consent agenda. Futurely, we might have some floor, get that as a college, as a college stuff to be taken care of. So, I would like to move on to the agenda that the board has mentioned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any questions?
Hold up, one more to the class agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
So, our first thing tonight is, again, thank you all for being here. This is school board appreciation, and that's why we have our fours back here behind us. They're going to present a couple of songs for the board tonight. Again, their board is school board appreciation, and we want to recognize our board members. Thank you for all you do for our students, our staff, and our communities. Nelson, not easy, dealing with some things that you deal with from complaints, whatever you may be. But we're elected by not an easy party, and so thank you for all you do in time, and every day, and to us, please. As far back, we recognize our board. We're going to follow the video we're going to show, then we're going to have our fours, Nelson and Nelson, and I will do the same.
Thank you for being our school board. We are lucky to have you. Thank you, school board.
I was thinking, too, that's why I'm glad to appreciate you.
Thank you, school board.
We appreciate all your hard work and dedication to the board.
Thank you, school board.
Thank you for all you do from Hammond Elementary.
Thank you, school board.
Thank you, school board, for anything you want to say, if you have any proverbs. And if you have anything to say that matters, I just want to make it clear.
School board members, thank you for your smiles, your friendship, bringing glory to everyone. Thank you for all the time and energy you throw on families of board, loving our school, most of all, just me and you. We appreciate all you do. Love, very great, A.T.S. Thank you, school board.
I don't know what I'm doing, I just want to thank the school for the books that take me on adventures.
Of course, we love the school board.
Thank you, school board members.
Thank you, school board, we appreciate you.
Thank you, school board members, for all your work.
Thank you, school board.
Thank you, school board members, for all that you do. You rock.
Hi, my name is Nori, and I am a senior school board member, and I'm a hard worker. So, thank you for having us, we are happy to be on this morning.
Please want to say thank you to the school board for all that you have to give us. Your best friends, your most appreciated, and value, so just want to say thank you to all of them.
Thank you, school board. Thank you, school board members. Thank you, school board members.
Again, so tonight, we're also honoring Kevin Anderson's school and Nelson's school board for their work. And Nelson's school board, so that is our first event, and Nelson's school board, who has been here as...
Ari, Ari, Amuslatse, Ari, Ari, Amusta, Ari, Anatuslatse, Adua. Aravaletuwe, Batse, Aravaletuwe, Batse, Aravaletuwe, Batse, Latse, Ah. Ari, Ari, Amuslatse, Ari, Ari, Amusta, Ari, Anatuslatse, Adua. Aravaletuwe, Batse, Aravaletuwe, Batse, Aravaletuwe, Batse, Latse, Ah. Anamana, Kule, Rave, Anamana, Kule, Ra, Anamana, Kule, Rave, Akala. Anamana, Kule, Rave, Akala, Ayaku, Aye. Anamana, Kule, Rave, Akala, Ayaku, Aye, Ayaku, Aye. Ari, Ari, Kule, Rave, Anamana, Kule, Ra, Anamana, Kule, Rave, Akala. Anamana, Kule, Rave, Akala, Ayaku, Aye. Anamana, Kule, Rave, Akala, Ayaku, Aye, Ayaku, Aye. Ari, Amuslatse, Ari, Ari, Amusta, Ari, Anatuslatse, Adua. Aravaletuwe, Batse, Aravaletuwe, Batse, Aravaletuwe, Batse, Latse, Ah. Anamana, Kule, Rave, Anamana, Kule, Ra, Anamana, Kule, Rave, Akala. Anamana, Kule, Rave, Akala, Ayaku, Aye, Ayaku, Aye. Yakama, Ya, Ya, Kaya, Me. 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 Ayaku, Aye. Yakama, Me, Ah. Ayaku, Aye. Yakama, Me, Ah. If you have stress and just can't find rest, and life falls apart, give me your hearts in harmony. We can fight anything. Never give up. You must believe. Never give up. You can achieve. You can do it if you put your mind to it. Hold on, keep holding on. Lay your worries on me. I know we'll succeed. Never give up. Don't you give up. Never give up. When you are down and peace can't be found, and lost in the night, I'll be your light. Peace in our hands. We will sing and we'll dance. Never give up. You must believe. Never give up. You can achieve. You can do it if you put your mind to it. Hold on, keep holding on. Lay your worries on me. I know we'll succeed. Never give up. Don't you give up. Never give up. Never give up, never give up, brother. Never give up, never give up, sister, never. Never give up, never give up, never give up, never give up, brother. Never give up, never give up, sister, never. Never give up, never give up, never give up, never give up, brother. Never give up, never give up, sister, never. Never give up, never give up, never give up, never give up, brother. Never give up, never give up, sister, never. Never give up, never give up. Never give up.
So, on February 9th, Nelson's school four students and... Hammers County Middle School, the District 13 audition course. In October, with 500 students, the District 13, this council members, the call cover, participated in the audition for the event. This is all District Four's audition choir, that's highly competitive and challenging for doing. The firing screen together, talented singers from each county, were exhilarating to the evening. On the second day, all students were clued with the captivating concert showcasing music they had just learned. The school, with 500 students, there were auditioners. Selected 100 middle schoolers and 100 high schools were chosen to be part of this prestigious choir. The Nelson choir had a purple printout for auditions with 15 students, nine for spot. We are thrilled to announce that now that our students have been selected for this baiting this exciting event. Laura calls begin at the county anticipated all district event, where students will showcase their vocal talents the following day in a common concert. We are thrilled to have these students representing Hammers County Middle School. The students that are going to the choir are, did not call your names, just go forward. Do you chair the seventh grade? Dee Dee Davis. From the high school, I'm going to introduce Cheyenne Johnson, from the high school of West River. David Kelly, seventh grade. Mike May, eighth grade. Lindsay Marie, at this counter, seventh grade. Chloe, from the middle. Paratelli, eighth grade. Kelly Ware, eighth grade. And Nelson Washington, eighth grade. We want to congratulate everyone with a quick picture, and then let's go back to the other. Congratulations, thank you. Of course, members of the evening, I also want to start with our student of the month. We have student of the month, I'm going to call your names, please go forward with the four members that said. And we'll get pictures she took, and add you for student of the month recognition. So, from the high school, we have Caitlin Baxter, Peyton. And this is the recognition. Caitlin is incredibly positive, always. She is kind and caring, represents all the good ones to see in our lives. Caitlin was nominated because of her passion for reading and the courage going to sing. Igniting the singing passion in her peers. She has learned to read, exchange with her English class. Her teacher Miss Watson stated that she has never seen a passion and excitement for reading like this in all her years of teaching. In addition, Caitlin is perfect at tennis, straight A's, is a star of the golf course for our board. Congratulations. Nelson A.D.C., we have Xavier Lanning, I'm not sure if later, I'll be here in a minute. But we'll go ahead and read his recognition. Xavier works hard to complete all assignments, is quiet in class, is not getting bullied in the classroom at all. He is polite, present in the locker room. Xavier has heavy behavior issues. Xavier recently was placed back at his own baseball firm in the town of Nelson because he got all of his behavior bad in some situations. So, we want to congratulate Xavier. Hammers Middle School, Davina Eakland. Davina is an outstanding student, has positive character traits in all aspects of her life. Her infectious smile, optimistic outlook, all for inspiration, look for good in each day. Davina is a leader, very able to have significance that frequently everyone will respect and envy. That never heard of her unkind word, or attempt to treat anyone disrespectful. And I would like to proud to recognize Davina as a star student of the month for the evening. Congratulations. From the Nelson Middle School, Rachel Muller-Martin. Rachel comes to class every day with ancient workhorse. She is dedicated to being the best musician she can be, and has a passion for music. As president of the Nelson Middle School chapter of the Tri-County Honor Society, Rachel leads the chapter with fairness and grace. She is always willing to volunteer to help with service projects, to help raise fellow members, and brings many great ideas to meetings. She is always kind with her words, and is always willing to help out fellow students. All of Rachel's other teachers echo these words, and appreciate the insights she brings to school each year again. Congratulations. Emmeline Elementary School, Addison Reiser. Addison represents Emmeline well, and is recognized as a star student, always helping out her peers and her teachers. Addison is always willing to complete any task given, is an example, so a true leader in the classroom. Congratulations to that. Younger fellow members of the board, Rosa Miles. Rosa believes all her classwork and her homework, and generalizes all the characters of a good citizen, and we're so proud of her in our school. Congratulations to her. Central Elementary School, Dallas Johnson. Dallas is one of the few who consistently help with the Hammers cares. That briefly witnessed her being accountable for her actions, and is considered of others. She lends a helping hand when needed. She is safe in the hallway, and of all the impatience out in the Hammers care effect, carefully. Great job, Dallas. Eland Elementary, Carissa Weiss. Carissa is a star student for Eland for January committee reasons. She maintains Paul Hayes. She has perfect tennis, will be a top school leader. She is an outstanding orchard. Carissa recently won first place for elementary girls to reach the orchard tournament at Ozzie Fair College. Carissa announces her academic section could be her ability to lead, with the brand of her role she does. Great work. Madison Heights Elementary, Mason Hilton. Mason's teacher said that Mason is a very sweet child, and is always willing to help others in the classroom. He shows kindness and responsibility every day, so proud to have him in the class. Congratulations. Temperance Elementary School, Ridley Hunter. I don't think Ridley's hearing this thing, so... Ridley loves to help others and her teachers, and always tries to cheer for her friends and neighbors now. For that, she's a star student of the month. Congratulations to her. Let's take a picture real quick, and the board, and once it is there, we'll mail those, we'll get those to your schools, and the teachers will take them, okay? So, if you don't mind, everybody just to line up a little bit in front of the board, that'd be good. So if you don't mind, everybody just to line up a little bit in front of the board, that'd be good.
Alright. So thank you all for being here tonight, we also want to have people recognition, you know, people are done up on the act of public comment. But also want to make sure we recognize Black History Month and recognition of Black History Month, we recognize accomplishments of Black Americans that values history and areas of their state. We're thankful for many contributions to the industry, science, civil rights, politics, education, and athletics and more. So again, we want to recognize Black History Month and all our schools that things along, uh, even the middle schools, so we had our things along there as well. But I want to thank you guys here to ensure that and recognize Black History Month. This is also National School Counsel fee. But we want to make our school councils for all they do, and I'm proud of Mr. Neighbors, who was leading the world of school council.
Good evening, this is what we're going to do, let's see, and as the chair message, uh, we are blessed to have such an excellent community group of school counselors. Uh, we have them where many, many hats in our school logo, which are our paths to be a core role. We are constant sources of support to our students, often acting as an anchor in times of significant crisis and distress. We'd like to express our sincere appreciation for our behalf of our students, the last thing connected to candidate and students and families who are in Amherst County Council Council.
So this is also national, uh, national coolness, I can call it. National Kindness Week is next week. And the purpose of Virginia, of Virginia Kindness Week is to recognize the simple day to day acts of kindness that enable our schools to introduce safety and kinder, safer, healthier, and more comfortable to live, work, learn, but. All schools across the division will have activities focused on kindness during the week next week, so we want to make sure we recognize that. And we also want to make sure we know that this February also, February seems to be a lot of all the national businesses. February is also National C T E Month, and with that, I'm going to let Mr. Maddox speak more about our career type of education programs.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, as you know, it's February to celebrate the career type of education on great workers, a role that C T E plays in preparing students for both secondary education, to going straight to the workforce. Uh, C T E funds also time to recognize and celebrate our C T E students, our teachers, instructors, and our people. We got a lot of activities going on, just a few, the welding, the welding classes, the making tables for, uh, the less abroad that it would be, so more events. Uh, our Amherst Middle, Amherst Middle School agricultural students are practicing for some upcoming competitions. Our JAG students will take field trips, uh, this month to B T Island, Career Expo, Buffalo Arab Hall, Cooper Steel, and C I C. And our marketing students are creating social media posts, holiday meets program. Uh, fellow arts is also paid in the charity event for Amherst baseball. So just with that, I want to say we're blessed to have some of the best instructors in state. So just want to thank the instructors, everything they do for our students and Amherst County Public Schools. We also want to thank a lot of businesses and community for their support. Uh, for letting our kids do work based on our opportunities, our just maybe career payers. And allowing students to work in the workplace, that's a valuable experience for us. Also want to thank you as a school board for all your support for the C T E programs, uh, it's very appreciated. And in your gifts, should have brought this way. So in your packet of gifts, you have a tee shirt, and it was, the design was our new C T E logo. And our marketing, man's marketing students did the design. So you have the design here, and this is all the programs that we have, uh, just appreciating so much, the first thing.
So Mr. Chair, that is all of the current recognitions we have, and how it's, uh.
So now we'll move into public comment, and currently we have one person signed up here on the comment, so, um, Jeff Porter, would you set the mic, please?
Hi, um, pardon me, I'm Jeff Porter, uh, four, seven, eight, Woodie's Lake Road, Mass. United. It's great that you guys are meeting here, I just live right across those street, you know, trees over there, and, uh, it makes this easy. But however, uh, what's important is I are proving. One is I want to thank each of you who are on this board. You bring knowledge and insight and, and perspective, is that our gift? We need to hear difference, we need to hear your values, and we need to know what's the thing. Because somehow in the midst of all of that, and what you are presented and what you have to deal with. We need to have you as models to be able to handle difficult issues. You have done that well, and I encourage you to continue to do that. Secondly, I am grateful for all those who made this meeting possible. This is wonderful to be able to have it at this school, to have it in any of the schools. This really helps us, so thank you for that. The third thing is, I am trusting that one day I'm going to have really good hearing. But in a room like this, it's harder to hear. So I'm asking that you speak, speak clearly, distinctly. I don't need a lot of volume, but I do want to hear what you have to say. Because even those of you who are not part of the school board, you act to, you make things better for the children of Amherst County. You need to hear what to say, so thank you all very much.
Is there anyone else who has signed up to, uh, speak, or is anyone else in the audience here speaking with the board? Seeing up, talk about, move on.
So Mr. Chair, members of the board, we have staff recognition we wanted, uh, to do tonight as well. Uh, first of all, we have Staff of the Year teacher here, the first would be that I don't recognize a few folks that were vital in the mission at Central Elementary School with the situation happening back in the central. So I G Mark Ware, in December of that incident at Central, and with San Jose Bay, which had some drinks and ounce of venom residue that they had put out for the health of seven students. Uh, these students started coming, uh, to the office of the board being sick, um, our school health assistant is Erica Paxton Paxton, one of them.
Uh, this manager's, uh, one first aid was our treatment students, and she also started putting things together, these were pain, and so she started the process. And due to her quick thinking and her, uh, learning, one of the job skills, I began to know the value of her, I know that Officer Payne, who, uh, came over to the school and began starting to work with that process. And I thought sort of hero that helped save us, save the day, ensured students were sitting in charity, so we want to thank her for what she did that day.
The next I want to recognize, uh, Ms. Blair Payne, is Blair, come on up.
Blair is our lead nurse in the civil system, also is the urban Amherst Middle School, which is right across the road from Central Elementary. And coming in us, the opposite situation, she came up essential to assist in the assessment and treatment of students. She was instrumental in ensuring the students received a proper medical care. Initially, the training she gave Erica, again, she's our lead nurse, she doesn't leave us to training and have division with her nurses. I believe was essential in how Erica was able to respond to this accident. So we want to thank her for her work, not only that day, but also the work she's done to prepare our school health assistants for all they do, on their basis, treatment and dealing with students as well. So again, thank you for Blair for all you've done so, thank you.
Finally, uh, Debbie Ramon, please come on back.
So Officer Payne is one of our S R O's in the civil division, um, he was notified by the Maddox and the school of what was going on. He took the lead on the law enforcement side of this and really started, started organizing the U S response to the situation. Once on the scene, at Central, he, he ensured the scene was secure and the affected students have been transported. Uh, Deputy Payne also ensuring the evidence was secure, admitted to the Cox Best case at the sheriff's office for additional tests. This work, he could have left it right there, and I, if I didn't have been, we don't know what, but he took the extra step, took material back to the sheriff's office, they ran the test, and those tests were where we found that it was trace amounts of venom. Um, when receiving the test results, he also worked with the innocent to secure a search warrant. Well, the residents insisted in the search and he arrested two of the victims individuals. So I want to thank him for going the extra mile and taking the next step, particularly to this stop for those, but he made sure this was our closure, and Erica's dealing with this with others, so great, thank you for what you did. In the civil system, we want to thank the Maddoxes, Detective Payne for going above and beyond the normal call of duty and expectations to ensure the safety of our students and staff. Again, please show me a round of applause to recognize them for their actions, so thank you.
Alright, we're doing off call. Next we have our Staff of the Year and Teacher of the Year recognition, so we're going to start with our Staff of the Year. Amherst County Public Schools recognizes, uh, Support Staff of the Year, H B O director, Department of Public Division. He is tending his honor to exceptional qualities and demonstrating serving in the division and the students to families in the community. All of our building and department level winners are viewed by our division recognition committee, and they will start the division winner. Now we're going to call forward our building, uh, building level recipients and then elements of the winner after that. So, uh, Staff of the Year, and if you're here, please come forward, we'll stay in the usual spot for the rest of the stands tonight. We have Peyton Page, this is a student at Amherst County High School. Helen Floyd, a structural assistant at Amherst Middle School. And Lauren McGuire, Secretary of Nelson Middle School. Christina Farley, a student in Amherst Elementary School. Lauren Hoffman, a structural assistant at Emmeline. Catherine Moses, a structural assistant at Central Elementary School. Stephanie Fuller, a student in Eland Elementary School. Ruth Wesley, a student in S Twenty Secondary School. Bobby Campbell, Secretary of Nelson Elementary School. And Chelsea Don, Secretary of.
I guess, moving every penny in school.
So let's give, Ricky, a picture of them, and then we'll announce our winner. And the, and the Staff of the Year for the divisions has been Bobby Campbell, Secretary of Nelson. So I came in with the, uh, mindset that I was going to get very acquainted with that permission quarter, got up and talked about a lot of important things to say, I got a little nervous. We're going to just go with the words that are already written. Bobby Campbell is worth a temper right in twenty years now, who is the person that walks the front row of the school that Bobby doesn't personally know. Her job duties are the same as the other administrative assistants, she fulfills them all professionally. It's obvious and tangible that's set her apart. On more than one occasion, her relationships with parents or others in the community have led T E S to find a great success. On top of the relationships with those with parents who love the students, what's most amazing about this is Bobby. T E S is truly lucky to have her as a resident and alma mater. But next we want to do our Teacher of the Year recognition. So our Teacher of the Year, uh, you know, all of our schools have nominated a Teacher of the Year, we have a major pay for our provision to make a profound impact on the lives of our students. All of our building level winners are viewed by division recognition committee, who's located division winner. And the division level winner will be submitted to the state or a state level consideration in the Merity Book of Arts Community Teacher of the Year Award. So at this point, I want to call forward, uh, our Teacher of the Year, Lomenees, and it will have to be announced soon after that. So Teachers of the Year, Mr. Hunter Rattle, Amherst County High School. And Mrs. Loski, Ameriskan Middle School. And Nelson Middle. Ms. Amy Dawson, Ameriskan Elementary School. Ms. Colter, Amalon Elementary School. Ms. Mary Barby, Central Elementary School. Ms. Patty Gibson, Ewa Elementary School. Ms. Kristen Gray, Sikes Elementary School. And Ms. Karen Fisher, Jefferson Elementary School. The other one of all, Natalie Nelson. And the winner is Donna Rattle, Ameriskan High School.
All right. Ms. Donna Rattle is dedicated to spiritual life education and continues to do so with our I.A.D. programs. Ms. Rattle not only serves as a math teacher at Ameriskan High School, she also serves as the Math Department Chair, and ACHSS Coach, and Division Math Coach, and Project Graduation Coordinator, and many other hats that I could continue to list when we be here on earth. In addition to all that, she does promote our students and their educational experience, Ms. Rattle is also simply a great person and supporter of her colleagues. For all these reasons, she's been selected as the 23th, 24th Ameriskan High School Teacher of the Year for Mount, Ameriskan Public Schools Teacher of the Year. Ms. Rattle's been in education for over 30 years, and 19 of those years spent in Ameriskan High School, and to say that Ms. Rattle is dedicated is an understatement. She's consistently gone above and beyond to assist our students and her colleagues in whatever way possible. She's not only taught thousands of ACHS students in her time period, but she's impacted so many cohorts in the many thousands of times that she's completed. She's Division Math Coach, where she assists all math teachers in Nelson Middle School, Ameriskan Middle School, and Ameriskan High School. She's developed quality relationships with these teachers, and because of her efforts, she's led a better overall vertical alignment in our school division. Additionally, Ms. Rattle serves as our Math Department Chair at Ameriskan High School. She advocates for the teachers in her department, but also for her colleagues in other departments as well. As a member of the ACHS leadership team, and also as the ACHS ACHSS Coach, Ms. Rattle ensures that she's doing all that she can to build a positive school culture. Finally, Ms. Rattle also serves as our Project Graduation Coordinator, where she oversees all of the tutoring and mediation that takes place both during school and after school. She truly is a brilliant, honest woman who does everything. Most importantly, she's just a great person. Congratulations. So, this year, at Ameriskan High School, we had a really unique situation when we voted on our Teacher of the Year. I've been a principal for four years, and in all four years, two of them are presidents and two of them are high school. The way that we operate the Teacher of the Year is we sought input from a lot of different levels. We asked faculty, from the staff, and the vote, and then administration to vote. Sometimes we've had a top writer who would ask central office personnel to weigh in as well. This year, I've seen a survey out to the entire staff, and it was tough. I'm going to invite Danny Fisher to the stage.
Mr. Dino, Ms. Fisher. It's the wife of Mr. John Andrew Fisher, who tragically passed away in September. His colleagues knew him and loved him, and truly voted him as the Teacher of the Year, not because he passed away, but honestly earned it. And we are very thankful that you're here, Mike, because you deserve this, and so thank you.
After she died, uh, we were working through this situation with Ms. Fisher. We thought it was important that John, Ms. Fisher, be recognized, so we asked President Good to, uh, Bob Good to bring something forward to the House Government, and to let this behind her resolution regarding concerns with schools and that part of the government and the bigger house floor, you know, that Ms. Fisher and I thank you so much.
So, this time I would... Turn my mic up. This time I would ask forward to approve a fifteen minute recess. Uh, there's some presidents around the corner, and so I'll have a recess. Those people are here, you can't do anything, I like it. (Laughter) This is what coffee we got over there. (Laughter) Snacks are this way. The snacks are this way. So I...
So Will just, Will just wants to be on the media.
Yes. Good, good. Say that next. Yes. I know. I definitely try to. Not a mistake. They're very each other. Yeah. So, I love to see her. Oh. She's like... Okay. But he's like taking to it. Oh, absolutely. So, we've been different on... Yeah. So. Thank you. Yeah.
How are you?
How are you? Good, how are you? Yeah, William just said to me, William just said I'm supposed to figure out another thing for Doug, so I'll find, figure out a day with him, I'll tell on you, and we'll figure out, because I think we missed a few of the seniors, but we'll figure it out. Yeah. I'll call you later. Good, how are you? Yeah, William just said to me, William just said I'm supposed to figure out another thing for Doug, so I'll find, figure out a day with him, I'll tell on you, and we'll figure out, because I think we missed a few of the seniors, but we'll figure it out. Yeah. I'll call you later.
Yes.
Oh.
The monkey chocolate is... Excellent.
Yes.
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 You like the singing?
Yes.
You got one to be on that?
You got cookies to go to check them out?
Yes.
You want to check out the treats too?
I'm not.
Cookies?
Which one are we on?
Seriously, I think we lift like right up there or down there.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you need anything, you can use...
Okay.
This is a C game.
We have a chance?
Yep.
Congratulations.
But in the right time, we're at this.
Yeah.
You must have heard this one.
Well, you've been like...
I get the ring here. It's only like, it's not even a box itself, it's just like, you actually don't want it. It might feel like a yearly thing, but not that expensive. So, I would recommend that you just place it here. So, and you get access to it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, no?
Yeah, if you have any questions.
We thought I'd got your...
Oh, do you have the Firefly?
Yeah.
Yeah, Firefly, it's a really good one.
Yeah, thank you all. But sure.
Oh, so you got better internet than I do. But if you have questions, I'll just stand there.
Sorry.
I'll keep you hooked.
(Laughter)
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 Hey, Douglas, what am I?
I'm just gonna like...
Where's my friends?
I want to split the pot.
Four, three, four.
Oh, man.
(Laughter)
(Laughter)
Okay.
I mean, it'll be very easy.
(Laughter)
(Laughter)
I mean, it'll be very easy.
(Laughter)
I know somebody who's different.
I don't mind.
I've never, I've never known someone.
This is so exciting, awesome. I'm just personally happy.
(Laughter)
Yes, me.
(Laughter)
I'm just really happy.
(Laughter)
Yes, me.
(Laughter)
I'm just really happy.
I'll pass.
I'll pass.
You're happy.
I'm happy.
You're happy.
It's true. It's always true. It's like we all...
That's why she's a knowledge business.
(Laughter)
I have a little bit more.
(Laughter)
I don't have it.
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 Actually, now that my life can also sound like a picture.
That's right.
James, I check all of them.
I mean, it'll be very easy.
(Laughter)
I know somebody who's different. I don't mind. I don't mind.
This is so exciting, awesome.
I'm just personally happy.
(Laughter)
Yes, me.
(Laughter)
I'm just really happy.
I'll pass.
I'll pass.
I'll pass.
You're happy.
I'm happy.
What is it?
It's true. It's always true.
At least that it was like me all the time.
It's true.
Especially she's a knowledge business.
(Laughter)
I have a little bit more.
I don't have it.
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 With one of my...
I'm just really happy.
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 Put my T-shirt on.
I think I am like, you know, I'm very lucky. I've been telling people who's going to go to the dance.
Tomorrow that way. That'd be great. Thank you. You too.
I understand. She know what I mean.
Tell them I've checked on your car, so you never know when I'm gonna call us. Jim's a char.
It's gonna be, they'll let me know that.
I need a laugh, sorry.
All favors. Coming on next to six, yeah, six point oh.
So this is one of the festivities.
Good evening, Lord and Savior. The school of faith will bring this this week with lots of activities. This part of the community is our important role. For that being said, in welling, those of us who are working on our projects to officially become certified and safe learning. And in short part, I shook our competition to moving back to start. We are all being super excited. We have been through a process of minutes and effort, which are cooking you to hang on. We will finally reveal our shows at our pre-teen night on February fourteenth. And at seven P M, it takes will be ten dollars a person. And we hope to see you all there. We will then travel to our first competition that same weekend. We will also have all happy courts. This is our first year doing that. And we will so showcase our elementary, middle and high school. Files and symbols, which will be on February seventeenth. And then English ceremony, Jan act weekend, taking for the team off. The English theater theater has presented their marvelous deception that's going to light up the northern street. Their opening night was destiny. And they also perform on the night through Sunday, all shows for the seventh weekend. I've heard some great shows, so I just imagine it's a lot of stuff again. Our twenty twenty three aim of this virtual staff will win the first place in twenty twenty three's classic press association virtual award. And most outstanding prizes will be given in twenty twenty three. Congratulations to them. And other congratulations to our world music, world music, ninety. They were very important to come to the title of the safety. The all this for fame concert was held at home in high school on February quarter. They dropped on the game university to be back. And last month, we celebrated our preschools during principal appreciation. They do so much for us and they just keep schools together. They also seem to be better when they care so much with the work so many for them. Happy practice in month. Our schools have made a great effort to celebrate the movement as it was in this month. They honor the triumphs and the service that came from nation to day. This month is also the national CTE month. We celebrate new accomplishments and CTE programs. They have helped and importantly, all the halls to this. CTE programs around so many people with great nature. I'm also personally very grateful to the CTE programs, they have brought the most truly in knowledge. The S C C O A is hosting a non-spiritual activity. And everybody's fully born to dress up in that. That's all I have for today. Thank you all for the support, love and knowledge inside. Have a great day.
Good evening. Hope you all have been doing well since the last time we met. Since the last time we met, I visited Central Elementary. I think there are pictures over there. So these pictures are actually from the preschool this is in. So I kind of toured around the school. As kids were celebrating the hundred day of school. So some of them dressed up in the eighties, and others dressed up in grandpa's and grandmas. Overall, the school had a great atmosphere. Tell that the kids are really enjoying the learning experience they're receiving there. I always had a great relationship with the school. So that was just great to see. This week is National School Council meeting. So we want to say thank you to all the council, the county, you know, they work hard every day, just for the schools. And the other I love I notice. February is also full appreciation month, you want to thank you too all for all the work and time that you put into the schools. As I mentioned, we're just wrapping up for the last meeting. And our track team had its first postseason track in the district. And freshman Aken Thomas actually won the official championship total. So it's something special. I think you all should have seen it back years ago. Spring sports are being ready to have official days of trials and practices. So keep out that spring sports people with. Billy and I also played the official board school period idea that school here goes on. So we can't believe it goes forward back to you all. Now that's all I have and that's all.
So before you guys leave, I'd like to give you, thank you guys for coming out. And going to schools like that, I mean, it's just a little thing for you, for the little kids, it's a big thing. I mean, we, we're just the old adults there, but you're the guys, they want me one day. So thank y'all for doing that. It's awesome.
Hello, welcome to the league. Whatever your question is, they want you to.
So we're at seven, the school board's policy committee. Mr. Chair, the department's the industry's in front before you can discuss our session of questions. Natalie, you got a question?
So I would like to propose for board that was an honest and thought justice. So on the board, the policy committee for this year. I'm hoping for discussion, if there's others who'd like to put this thing, gladly discuss it. That's my recommendation. It's not something we need any, we need a motion consensus.
Next week, eight ones zero one initiated.
Today, the board chair, I guess, good news to report as the construction of high school is along the way. Mr. Rose will take over a few weeks. Probably just wanted to kind of let you know a few things about that. The, the point of course, one, there's another project that we've been working on. And that's the new house. And hopefully within the next few months, we'll start working on that. I've been working on that with the architect and what I did today. But there was kind of a mess out there. And we had a contractor from the Dallas pretty happy bit. So Mr. Rose just decided that he was going to make a tractor and then he wanted to close it up. So that's the kind of guy, I guess, I wanted to really recognize him in a whole session. I don't know what great job he did and thank him for that extra work that he went on because. So yeah, I think if you're going on the house, it was in the last meeting. One thing I want to do, I know this is a matter of talking about CTE group, they formed a CTE month. What we did this morning as well. Few weeks ago, when I first started working for these contractors, we need slightly start the gas to do it on the grid. And those like the land everything out there. They're forming, got Tom Matt. Freshman, this guy goes very technical, very smart, was doing it under my gap. And we've been on longer than that, talking for a thousand meetings. And then I'm not going to stand out this show to you last month, you know, practical, which was still working on for next part of the battle. But anyway, you guys talking, we'd like to have John interacting with the CTE students. And how, you know, prevent what he does. He uses the game called Furby here, which is there's been the whole survey, there's like that type of things. Thanks for today. He, he can take, he can go get in order to take the instrument wrongs. Downloading that, wanting to cycle changing, having need to do a lot of different things along the way. So you know, this is very interesting. So today, by ten thirty AM, I guess fifty fifty two is in that period. John gave in, gave his sign, talked about fifteen twenty minutes in that period for what he does, how he does it. And it's like, and it's like I said, both the term. that's up, and, you know, if I said, both the term, well, I did not, I'm slightly, and this head, you know, maybe maybe life, just so we did this, he went to school, went to college, and, like, as a good student, as long as I say, there's nothing else that he did, but, so anyway, he did name of office, and he took those suits out to the side, or what happened with TurboGears, he downloaded the Israel driver, and we get one, they downloaded TurboGears, he makes a very version out of site, and then he sent that to all the loafers and contractors, and that's sort of that there, so it's not against, okay, this is where we're going to do it, and then that is, is computerized, so we've been taking the good process, it stopped working, and you dragged it, two bottles, and they're going to be hard to lock, probably two to six students, spread out, uh, the final equipment, see how it works, give it to us, so it's not a problem, so we were able to give a real situation into that parking lot, literally, of the house, and show how that parking lot can work, and how it works, and what he does, so, and, anyway, how are we? Uh, a lot of things going on, uh, the parking lot, it's actually at seven right now, getting there, I didn't know, another pitch, and they bought in, they bought in thirteen thousand tons, which would be a down to thirty percent, this parking lot back school, um, the parking lot, we were doing, and it's, uh, because that's what it'd be for, so the concrete structure, definitely, uh, parking lot, you see the picture on the right hand side, that is the intention on, uh, down, following parking lot, last week, they, I was saying, no concrete out of that, and, and starting that, as well, uh, here, probably a few weeks and now, you start with concrete, and courage, and then you park it off. Again, this is great, we can go ahead, a lot, um, toward H P, uh, before, uh, before these exist in school, and this is the several, the other equipment, uh, well, the back and back, uh, that we just, uh, uh, giving you an idea, uh, white in the picture there, pretty much on a daily, kind of level, so, pretty warrior parking lot, there's some kind of two-foot rise, and, uh, it's, uh, through, through the center. Uh, ditching long, and it's kind of nice, but sometimes, there is a little bit of a rock, because it's a little bit of a rock, this is a trench where the, uh, existing cargo, the new cargo, transforming, you know, getting full, you see why I get the bottom of the picture, uh, it's done there, but then in about three days, you know, you're gonna have to go out there, and that's the, uh, closing, we also did the, uh, the, well, school on the island, we also did, you know, shit, this is the de-powerize, we're, we're really, transform, and I guess back into the existing counter room, which we, you showed before, we lost the door, so. Again, our rock, landing outside, going against the landing out there, um, so they're committed, and actually getting work on the, uh, the doors, this is just some of the area, and laying out with the, uh. This week, we saw a burn, uh, Lord of the Shark, we saw a burn on the footers, that before him, and like Dr. Lewis mentioned, would be four concrete, probably did it long before, and had four concrete, a hundred forty one. So, five point in, this is why they used the grid, so Jim, uh, all he is, we have locker rooms, running grid tops there, and working out across, for, back to that school from that quarter, that's really, was, I think, we're okay. And Dr. Lewis says, this is the, uh, softball, I don't know, that's what, four pictures in here, but we did have, I always did, a lot of work over there, and actually, we did, I almost say nine, as in, maybe not, I saw the timber, but maybe four seven, this one, uh, but softball season started, the judge, we're all excited, like, hey, what do we do with money, that's zero, it's not, it's not a way to get, uh, last week, this was the first time we could get in there, so we have, we have our guys up there, uh, motor, and a couple days, and then doing that, and I worked out, just like, working on some of the railway, and, 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 but, we're going to softball season, and, uh, here, so we had a place for the fans, it's good, nice wall, walking back there, so we got to look for, I believe, we got some things going on, we got to do the, um, shop over the distance, and then Rockville, and we should be waiting on that next week, so who I go, we're going to assess, stay in touch, and then they grab all that up, and send fifty bucks out of the door, but anyway, nothing to do, we're going on, um, here for long, we'd like to see the good coverage around, and, uh, we'll, if you have any questions, you can ask.
What do you think? Thank you, Mr. Rose.
Thanks, uh, next, I'm not going to just like to update you on some of the safety drills that we've completed over, uh, the last month, uh, every school has completed, uh, that drill, and I wanted to kind of update you on something that you made for, maybe so, uh, we are already compliant, uh, in the household, one, two, five, as far as this is all, and it hasn't passed yet, but the passes are prior to certain schools to have a hand, uh, we are already compliant with that, with, uh, one of the programs we have, the safety shield, so I just wanted to let you know, we're, we're a little ahead of curve, we're starting to practice on that, and then we'll also work on, over summer, we're also doing education drills, and, 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 so, just wanted to update you on the safety drills. And then next, I wanted to talk about, uh, something in our cafeteria, that was, uh, pretty neat over the last few days, uh, Virginia food, from Virginia kids, that's a B, F, B K, uh, came to us, and Chef Josh, or the chief, uh, Chef Anton, and the D O E came, and this is all about working with our cafeteria staff, and teaching them, uh, how to better name food from scratch, so it's a very interesting, uh, they came to Amherst High School in Central on February sixth, and that is high school entry, and they also on the seventh, uh, I talked to Kim, and she said that that was a success, and they gave our cafeteria folks some, I guess. Questions on those, I suppose?
What do you think, Dr. Lewis?
And before you do this, on, this is one thing, our cafeteria staff, preparing food, now, you kind of have to do that, the work they've done for being here tonight, uh, we don't want to see, it's, uh.
Eight one oh two, is the, uh, my operating, I'm not enough, for trying to work that?
Thank you, Dr. Lewis, good evening, uh, members of the board, I'm excited to talk to you tonight about our school-based mental health grant, you do have a copy of the full grant that is there for your reading pleasure, remember, you could read all of that information, uh, but I'm going to kind of do an overview with the certification, um, so, before we get started, I just want to say, uh, thank you to a few people, uh, Jimmy Brady from V C U helped us kind of organize all the pre-work for this, and he worked with Amanda on the board from Battle Center, and Sheri Wilk from Backwood from Horizon, and I also want to thank Dr. Norman and people on it, show their help was great, because it was really easy, and every time they did this all done in a minute of time. So the first slide you can see there is the total amount, um, that we're getting, which is a substantial amount of money that we have to spend by June thirty, uh, so three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, and, um, if you want to see the next slide, that shows how we're going to be spending that money, so most of it is going towards personnel, but not towards our personnel, uh, because this is the Department of Eight Year Home Grant, it goes towards services that are on and out of the Department of Eight Year Home, so we're women, we actually pay the salaries for, uh, folks at the Battle Center, to, and also at Life Push, which is, um, an organization that does our alternative suspension center, and so we're going to pay salaries for them to expand their services in our schools. We also have a little bit of that going to a grant administrators to cover our costs, so that is how we make money to save here in Amherst High School. So what we're doing is working on awareness, um, and training, and the first thing I'm going to talk about is signs of suicide, and this is an evidence-based model, uh, to just make people aware of what to look out for when somebody, you know, you think you got suicide or suffering from depression, so we are going to work with the Battle Center to push this down, also partnering with some of the psychology students at Sleep Prior, uh, they're gonna go into, um, reflection later this year, working with Mr. Proctor to kind of figure out which passion, it's not going to be every passion, we're going to make consent, we're doing all things before we do it, but later this year, we're gonna, um, pushing some passions, we're going to do a lesson on sentence suicide, and kind of pilot this, and see how it goes. As part of that, there is a, some depression screening that we've sent home to parents, so they know what their child is going to be seeing, um, and we're going to send them letters, we're going to make a very clever, it's already, you know, we're doing. We are also going to have that scene training, you know, with the staff, and so it's just a one-hour module, but the staff can kind of click through it, work through their own program, and it'll help them be aware also. Uh, we're going to continue our youth mental health first aid training, which we've been doing, um, and the Rising Department are helping partner with us on that, they have trained trainers as well, and then A C interface is a trauma and normal training, uh, that our Amherst parent coalition does, so we're going to partner with them to do some of that for parents, so it'll be family events, the parents can come to, uh, learn about trauma, and how to impact the children. All right, so here are some of the things we're doing, uh, the first thing I'm going to talk about is universal screening, and we actually have to do a place, a copy of our grant, universal screener, we've been having on this for quite some time, the Battle Team, this is not something that just came up from the grant, it's probably about three years of making that, uh, the universal screener is, um, the question for them, you can ask me what we're going to do, there is some feedback that we're getting on that, so the questions will change before it goes out, um, and what we're trying to get from that information is how to allocate our resources in the future, and we hope to continue to apply for this grant, and continue to get it in the future, so that information will tell us where are our students' time deficits, in their, their social skills, or their self-efficacy, or whatever our activity, and we can push those resources to kind of target, if they are in, that will make it in certain grade levels, or whatever our data shows us, so that's, uh, coming soon. Uh, again, we're going to do the science suicide lesson, and then, we're going to have, uh, partner with Adon, who has a group here at the high school, not here at the whole school, at the high school, um, and that's going to be, Adon is for, um, students who have alcohol within their families, or impacted by alcohol or substance abuse, so that is, um, completely voluntary, it's going to be outside organization that will take care of that, uh, or make it available for students, uh, who want that. Life Push, again, are the, the focus to our alternative suspension center, they're going to expand to doing our I S D at the high school, so they're actually, this is already started, they have a person who's there full-time now, um, doing social skills and working with kids who are sent to I S D at the high school every day, so that's a really great thing, um, Battle Center will expand their school-based mental health services, includes substance abuse services, baby services, um, outpatient therapy, and then a school-based mental health services. They're also going to do some mental health and substance abuse screening for, like, just students who want that, or parents who require your shoes for that, and we're going to continue to develop our relationship with the rising eight year home, we're gonna work on an M O U with them, so that they become a provider services, and they're going to provide us next year, have a support partner, so that is something that will come in the future, like, this year's grant, we're working on what that would look like, and we're going to advertise that position, so that would be somebody that is their person who is supporting our benefits. And the last slide there is just our goals, our goals are to increase the awareness about mental health and substance abuse, to increase, um, the availability of services in our community, and of course, to build momentum towards a more collaborative and comprehensive mental health program, so happy to answer any questions you have about that.
Mr. Chair, what do you, yes, Mr. Ross? I have a lot of words. Glad for your, the, uh, the questionnaire, we're the, uh, setting out, is that part of the required for the grant?
No, it is not part of the required for the grant, we worked on that just a while ago, with our Battle Team, it actually started in the conference plan, and we had five years ago, so that is motion.
Right, right.
So it is not part of the grant, it's going to give us data to support the grant, and keep the grant going in the future.
All right, so the annual data from the questionnaire is from the state, within the district, or will that be something that we offer to the person who ran it?
We, we would be classified for it, I guess.
Okay, that data won't pass the school. The information we acquired.
Yeah.
From the brand, from questions, that source won't be sent out.
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay, so it's completely confidential?
Yes, it's completely confidential, yes.
Thank you. Or anything else?
Thank you.
Okay. Eight one oh three is, uh, students suspension for January, you should have your, I always say, the, uh, students suspension for January.
What do you think, for, uh? Not four oh, Mark Ross?
So next is, uh, next is, uh?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, number four, according to my, are your revenue coming forward, um, it's part of the revenue, our original revenue, we'll see that we started this year, uh, about three hundred, revenue was, was anticipated as a starting beginning, your inventory reports, you would let two percent increase to a contract set, where also revenue, I think, for, was let some, um, per creation, and that's said in the last week, that, uh, the journey that the government is, we're seeing the outlook, good, southern, all right, it's still strong, and everything's looking good, but, I don't know.
Four, do you think, for production? Thank you. So. Not four oh, I mean, uh, technically.
Yeah, that's the, uh, form of instruction, yeah?
Sir, into the third. Sit there. Tonight, I'd like to provide the review information regarding the year today, the first thing I'm watching is, recognizing this children will, and we're continuing to pull all of our data for us, several times this year, and compile the presentation for you, and you'll see tonight, it gives a really good, um, basic understanding of where we're headed, uh, where we are currently, right now, and where our, which room particular will be at the end of the year, if students. The first thing I'd like to review for you is just some background information, the test that we're talking about, the winter assessment, was taken by grades three, through eight students, in just reading and math, and then the division determines that we give out no levels to break assessment, um, that any course, any student who's taking the course that has broken assessment at the end of the year, uh, that these grades, that these were not used as grades, because those, um, videos is not allowed for students to break assessment, to be graded, and they were, um, actually tested on the full curriculum for the full year, the current, uh, while they have been instructed on how to the curriculum as of yet. One of the things that we did do is already request from the, um, Virginia Department of Education, information going out to parents regarding our, um, our assessments, so we didn't, we requested the paperwork from them, it should come back to us at the end of the veteran, we'll, we'll send out these progress reports to our, um, parents, for the information on what the students are going to fall, as well as where your growth was, and, um, miniature assessments, so that we'll be able to, um, have that information. Just to give you some background on this, the way that the group's growth assessment was, um, determined on what amount of students moves, feeling their, um, their understanding of content, if you'll notice in grades three, all the way from grade eight, you go from a B R P scale score, which is not the same as a S L score at the end of the year, but a graduate where, um, you have a needs additional support, so those kids that are struggling in the non, um, grasp of concept, that, you know, taught or instructed them in the first round, those that are after this, those that, that they are on the same trajectory as they will be, and they did the rest of the curriculum, they'll be able to move to the, to the level that we know that they can, um, developing, and then the last, those are generally well-prepared, they came in to the end of the year test, um, already on a grade level, already on the same level that they needed to do by the end of the year, and they're very well-prepared. And I'd like to, right now, is to the owners of Mr. Neighbors, who's going to kind of go through, uh, all of the data for these different grades.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Mr. Ward, uh, I probably missed one of the, uh, whole job needs that they, uh, um, wanted to measure, uh, they presented tonight, is a worst case scenario, so we are looking at law data, it's not included in the calculation of your assessments, including work, X, Y, and Z days, some considerations we had at that time of year, that we don't have for our work assessments, um, there were some students who weren't able to complete this winter assessment, they are not included in the calculation, or is there a, or is there a, for us, essentially, that was done with those calculations, as we want to know that those students, back remember on, uh, the other side of that calculation there, there are other students, uh, maybe students with disabilities, that are participating in alternative assessment criteria, they may not back remember this calculation, because they may have a growth assessment model, whether their assessment, particularly, which at the end of the year, when they all are assessed, um, you also have some students that may have taken one of the other, or called, or, uh, they did not take vote, can't calculate the growth in all those two schools, uh, so back remember for all.